Gould.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Dean Felder.
Here.
vitro.
Here.
Miranda.
Yeah.
Dennis Calco.
Here. All right, Mr. Goers, I believe you were presenting if you're on, if you'd like to continue and we'll go from there.
Hi Chair, this is Carol Post, administrator for development academic economic opportunity. Um, I just wanted to refresh where we were at the slide that is the beginning of chapter three or part three of the presentation. Um, we've now covered all the background, we've gotten to the point, we've covered where our tools are and how they've impacted us, how prior decisions have impacted us. Part three is going to start to look ahead at our current state, at some of the pressing matters that we're hearing from our public, from our community, and some of the planning efforts that actually are already underway to address them. Uh, and just for logistics, when Randy concludes, um, we are going to turn briefly to Ms. Feeley, and she will be able to address very briefly the two additional motion items for item number four, I'm sorry, item number six around bonus density, and then item number four for the lot size five percent modification item. And at that point, we'll be able to conclude and open back to you Chair and Council for discussion of all of these motions and items. Thank you.
All right.
I had a question related to the last set of slides, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Dean Carter, go ahead.
Okay, Ms. Post, I guess sort of a fundamental, fundamental issue that, and I've looked through all the slides till midnight last night, so I know what you're doing, and I think some of them are really good. But I think that one of the fundamental core issues that I was asking Mr. Mr. Goers about, um, earlier was, if we think we're doing a good job and we're directing the growth where where it should be going, Goers pointed to charts and percentages of forty-five percent and that sort of thing. If if that's what the city planners think, but the community, and frankly, this councilman doesn't necessarily agree, um, you know, I I think we have to hone in in much tighter fashion along the transit corridors than the TOD areas, as opposed to having big giant circles and patting ourselves on the back. So that that concerns me greatly because if we don't acknowledge that we haven't done a good job and we aren't doing a good job, then we got we've got nowhere to go but down. And so that's my first comment. My second comment, and then I'll shut up. And this is not a criticism to anybody here, but it's a criticism to the community, and it has to do with transportation funding. That if we aren't going to fund transportation to accommodate all of these hundred thousand people that are headed here to Tampa, we'd be allowing any growth at all. And I'll repeat that. If we aren't going to fund the transportation to accommodate the future growth, then we need to stop the future growth and not allow any more development. And and I say that, and I know we I know we tried, we tried for twenty years and failed. We recently trotted, now it looks like it's important to knock this down. But if we don't, if we don't get it together on our funding for transportation, then we have no business whatsoever approving any future development. So that's just my so thoughts. But anyway, the first question is.
I'll let Randy continue the presentation, but I I do just want to comment, and certainly we agree with you completely about funding for transportation. But with respect to this, uh, the approach that we've taken and the data that we've reflected, we're certainly not patting ourselves on the back. I think we're just trying to reflect the reality of what the data has presented to us to this point. And I I'm, I would not get too caught up in one slide of a of this very comprehensive presentation. The circle was really meant to, as Randy has said now, be representative of what the percentages have shown us over the last decade. We have many challenges ahead of us, and the reason we've put all of this together and invested so much time is that we believe, as as you've stated, that there are difficult decisions that need to be made ahead of us, and we're ready, willing, and able to make them. But we don't want to make them without having data to support it. So I'll turn back to Randy and let him continue, and hopefully we will be able to satisfy your concerns and your inquiries further through the completion of the presentation. Thank you.
What I have to say is, I'm not relying on one slide, I'm relying on nine years of sitting on. We have to continually approve growth everywhere. And that's the. That's what the Armory Garden thinks are objecting to, is we, that that's the state, that's the state of our every Thursday. So so this is not a function of looking at one map. One map is very representative of council lives, building lives every Thursday. Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Councils. This is Randy Goers of the Planning Department. We're back at the part three slide where we are now. Uh, let's move on to the next slide. And, uh, we talked about the overall growth and how it compares with the strategy that's in the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. At the same time that growth is occurring, there are some development challenges and really are starting to emerge in as many neighborhoods and citizens are voicing their concerns to some of the challenges. A good example is, uh, what we were involved with with Davis Island and West Shore Palm. Just to refresh your memory, uh, over a year ago, um, there was a motion made to the Planning and Development Department at the time to come to before council and provide a report on delivering a form-based code to, uh, the Davis Island, um, neighborhood. Tom Snelling, the director at that time, and Catherine Coyle, the manager of the division at that time, came to council and presented, uh, an assessment that basically summarized that there wasn't enough staff at the time to do a form-based code, uh, that would take approximately eighteen months to complete, and if we went out to a consultant, uh, there would, it would be, uh, cost approximately a hundred thousand dollars. Council at that time filed, uh, passed a motion requesting staff to meet with, hold a couple of community meetings with each of the neighborhoods and try to determine if there's anything that could be done outside of a form-based code to address their concerns. Um, I met with Davis Island several times, uh, and the West Shore Palms. Unfortunately, because of the COVID, we weren't able to have community meetings. Uh, the conversations were really directed to a few representatives of the Neighborhood Civic Association, and then also the president of West Shore Palms. Um, and generally, uh, when we started speaking with Davis Island, the concerns kind of boiled, came down to three main areas. And one of them was that they wanted neighborhood associations to be able to have a greater standing in the development and filing appeals for a development review decision. That would be variances, design exceptions, rezonings, uh, other actions, anything had to deal with a, um, with a development, uh, application. Today, a property owner within two hundred and fifty feet has that ability to do that, um, because they're within two hundred and fifty feet of of where that development, um, decision is being made. The neighborhood association wanted to have the same ability to do that. Uh, and it wouldn't affect this Davis Island neighborhood association, it would be basically all neighborhood associations if we were to move forward. Leo has some, uh, some, uh, could provide implications, we provided a memo, I believe, that would summarize summarize those. But just the logistical part of allowing neighborhood associations to have the same kind of standing, it brings me to question of who's the neighborhood association really representing? Uh, do they have, are they, do they have to be part of the sunshine? Uh, what happens if, uh, the the property owner wins the appeal? Can he sue, and who did he sue, and what kind of damages? And all that kind of stuff comes into play. So we have a recommendation and, uh, not to allow, uh, not the the neighborhood associations to have that kind of standing. Um, and we can be available for more, to answer more questions on that. The other, um, suggestions were, uh, more design-related. They they suggested very, several specific design, um, uh, questions or things that they wanted to see in their code, not in a code, but, uh, in Davis Island. And then they also, uh, made some suggestions in terms of how, uh, the city could respond in in response to their particular situation. And basically, it gets down to, uh, uh, being able to respond to them, uh, and and with all those different, um, uh, suggestions or recommendations they brought forward. On West Shore Palms, their concern really was about, um, the the fact that many of their properties are being rezoned to RM, uh, eighteen, to take advantage of townhouse development. And when townhouses are built, the driveways end up becoming very close to each other. So it creates a little bit of a visual, uh, uh, it's it's a different visual rhythm than if you had single-family lots, uh, and and the driveways were separated by more distance. Um, that was primarily the the biggest concern that was expressed, although they said that there was a way of doing a larger plan to address, uh, that issue and others they would be willing to, uh, to look at. Uh, Armory Gardens was not part of the motion, but they contacted us, uh, through some, uh, I think it was emails through the Chair that was forward to us, and, uh, we've had some correspondence. Uh, their situation is different, and that is, uh, development is is occurring, uh, they have narrow streets, it's causing some congestion. Uh, garages are, they feel are a little bit too close to the, uh, front, uh, part of the property where cars are extending out into the sidewalk, uh, and there's parking issues. So they made some suggestions on where the, of of moving the garage further back, uh, into, uh, the the site. Um, next slide. What we're finding is in many neighborhoods, and this is the example for Davis Island, is that there's a question about the urban form implications of development. And this is development that would even occur without a re, without a, um, uh, plan amendment or even a rezoning, or going to permitting. Uh, in many cases, they've already had their, uh, their approvals. Um, and this is an example provided by Davis Island, the example on the, on the left, uh, an example on the right. Both of these have gone through our development review process, they meet the code. Uh, but according to, you know, a question would be, is one more preferable than the other? Um, residents of Davis Island, at least the residents we talked to, the civic association, would would tend to say that I, the the image on the left is more, um, uh, preferable than the image on the right, even though they both meet our code. Um, next slide. There is a way to guide this kind of development, and this gets back to the whole intent of the form-based code, and it kind of brings us back full circle. These are images from the Seminole Heights Form-Based Code. And in Seminole Heights, there are eight housing types that are actually pre, uh, prescribed as part of the code. When a developer builds in Seminole Heights, they can choose any one of the, any one of the eight, um, housing styles to sort of blend into the character of the neighborhood. The code is very specific, it has, uh, a variety of different requirements on the lot, the, and where the building can go and so forth. Um, and, uh, there are, uh, very few opportunities to create an exception, yeah, in the Seminole Heights, uh, Form-Based Code. The reason it's that, uh, it can be done that way is because it took, again, the eighteen months of time to create the code, where all of the development decisions and questions are usually thought out in advance so that they, uh, they can write a code which is specific for that neighborhood. Um, when we look back at Davis Island, many of the specifics they were looking at, if it was written just for their, uh, uh, neighborhood association or Davis Island, um, would be very close of, uh, doing a form-based code, even though, um, some of their suggestions are, um, uh, well, many of their suggestions are are design-related. But the minute you start looking at an overlay or specific area, you're dedicating a lot of time into one area. Uh, and where, uh, the question is, is it, is it become something that is really scalable over the long run? Uh, in the thirteen years, I believe, uh, that the, we did the pilot project for Seminole Heights. Uh, it's been Seminole Heights, downtown, uh, has a form-based code, uh, and then the the West River area has a form-based code. Um, and and Fortieth Street only was, only had part of it, we haven't been able to finish the one on Fortieth Street. So in thirteen years, we've been able to do, uh, maybe three and a half areas. So the question is, is using that tool on a citywide basis or going to other neighborhoods, we don't think it's really scalable. Abby Feeley joined us a few weeks ago, as you know, and with her experience, uh, we feel that, uh, she feels that there's an opportunity maybe to look at some of these questions, uh, a citywide basis, that we're trying to address some of the design and form issues that will address multiple neighborhoods. So it isn't just Davis Island first, then West Shore Palms and Armory Gardens, but to try to look at the common problems from a, wanting to design and address those all from a common approach. Uh, next slide, please. Some of our planned studies and opportunities, uh, these are things that we've got in the works that that were, uh, uh, planned and they're, uh, have been initiated, some of them have been initiated in response to citizen concerns that we've already heard. Uh, and we will be able to show how we can address those concerns. Others, we made some modifications, uh, to address the concerns that we've heard. Uh, next slide, please. Our neighborhood commercial districts, uh, which was a, a response to a motion that was made, uh, a year ago to create, uh, this process to look at neighborhood commercial districts. Uh, we have two pilot projects underway now, the Main Street and the Palmasia, uh, Commercial District efforts. These plans will, uh, develop a process that we can start looking at smaller areas of the city and assess some of the implications for land use, transportation, housing, uh, parks, all of those things, uh, and provide the the plan in the roadmap for some of these smaller areas in the city. Uh, this project, uh, these projects have already started, uh, in September, and we hope to have them, uh, concluded in May, uh, of next year. Next slide, please. The Hart TOD study is a partnership with the City of Tampa, Hart, uh, the MPO and the Planning Commission, to look at the, uh, land use, uh, implications around the BRT stations. Um, uh, the, uh, the consultant, uh, is, um, will be looking at the current land use pattern, looking at, uh, the bus, uh, bus travel demands, the future development potential, uh, and recommend very specific, uh, uh, land use, um, uh, changes around the BRT stations. What that gives us is a model that we can apply to other areas of the city, not every, not all the city has BRT stations. But we'll be able to learn enough about land use and transportation that we can apply some of those lessons learned in other areas of the city. Next slide, please. Earlier this year, uh, we received a grant, uh, to look at, to, uh, to assess the implications of our land development regulations as a, as a result of, uh, potential sea level rise. Um, this grant basically will look at sea level rise scenarios over the next, uh, sixty years, up until two thousand and sixty, and I think beyond, uh, and try to assess what areas of the city are most affected by sea level rise and how our developed, current development regulations will mitigate the impacts of sea level rise. The idea being what parts of the city are affected and what parts of our code will probably fail, and when will they fail, and what sort of recommendations do we need to make to, uh, strengthen the code, uh, for long-term resiliency. This process, this program also looked at, uh, existing development in such that, we know that preparing for sea level rise is all about, what do you have to do to protect future development? But for development that exists today, the options are limited, and homeowners may not know what their options are. So part of this, uh, program is going to identify best practices, uh, from other areas of the country to, uh, support, um, existing homeowners that might be affected by sea level rise, providing them the tools that they can, uh, make decisions on or, uh, or or improvements of their own home. That project started in August, or concluded May, we'll start having community meetings, uh, on that project in, uh, December. Next slide, please. The Coastal Resiliency Action Plan is a planned, uh, series of, uh, programs which came directly out of the concerns that we've heard, uh, throughout the city, primarily in relationship to the Comprehensive Plan and also to development in, uh, areas, uh, of south of Gandy and other areas of the city. Um, this, uh, 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 planning effort, um, will do a few things. First one is to look at, assess, and modify and update the entire coastal strategy, uh, that's identified in the Comprehensive Plan. We heard earlier today, many people were talking about that, uh, those policies, they felt that it wasn't working, wasn't working, wasn't providing enough guidance. We agree, there doesn't seem to be, uh, enough guidance provided. Uh, property owners and developers should know exactly what's required of them. Uh, residents should know exactly what's going to happen. City Council should know exactly what decision and feel confident of the decision they're making on land development, uh, applications in the coastal, uh, high-hazard area. So, um, uh, the the intent of this program is to look at everything, all the policies in the Hurricane A and B zones, um, and recommend a strategy moving forward to meet state law, and then also the the intent of the community moving forward. We also put into the grant, uh, application, this is, uh, I mentioned, I'm going to talk to grant application. We put into the grant two community plans, one specifically for south of Gandy, to deal with all of the development issues, here regardless of the coastal high-hazard area. It's to look at where south of Gandy, uh, is today, what we see as the growth for the future, and what is the best community plan for that area as it moves forward, taking into consideration McDill's, all the redevelopment, uh, that could go on there. We also have Palmetto Beach included in there as a second area, uh, as a, another plan. And then the other part, which isn't, uh, uh, shown on the map, is that we know there's a, a large amount of our vulnerable population, low-income population that doesn't live in the Hurricane A and B zones, they live in other parts of the city. But in a storm, they are at risk too, the high winds, there's torrential rain, the flooding. After a storm, if the air, if the electric, electricity goes out, they're at risk to long, uh, long-term, uh, outage of electricity. So the plan will also look at the, uh, vulnerable populations in the city, uh, and recommend strategy. First of all, assess their vulnerability to, uh, tropical storms and assess their vulnerability and make recommendations. Um, as I mentioned or alluded to, this is part of a grant that's from the Department Environmental, um, or Department Economic Opportunity, specifically targeted towards areas that were vulnerable to hurricanes, uh, and tropical storms. Um, so that's how, that's why this is, uh, presented in this way. I want to thank the, uh, community, especially those that are in the south of the Gandy area. We attended a community meeting last, uh, week ago Saturday. We asked them to comment on the, uh, the grant proposal, uh, that's on our website. Um, and we received a hundred and four comments, uh, and and actually, as of today, I think we probably received a hundred and fifty comments that were transmitted as part of our, uh, response back to DEO, uh, in terms of the, we thought that it demonstrated the community need. So we hope, if we get that, uh, grant, we hope it's going to start after the first of the year and address many of the issues that were raised today. Um, if we don't get the grant, we still have to update the coastal management strategy. And that will be something that we'll have to do internally. I would rather have the grant, be able to, uh, because the issues are significant and they're, um, uh, not easy to, uh, go through. But, uh, so hopefully we'll get the grant and be able to have, uh, a consultant that can help us do that. Next slide. Uh, the next major planning initiative, uh, comes out of the Transforming Tampa tomorrow, uh, uh, program. And it's focusing on mobility to be able to implement a strategic plan to, uh, address mobility in the future. Next slide. The Mobility Plan, which is represented, uh, in, uh, the Moves, uh, uh, program, uh, to effectively gauge the community, uh, in clearer vision for mobility in the city, outline transportation objectives for the next thirty years and set standards and priorities for all modes of travel. Uh, next, uh, slide, please. Now, this is a summary of the Phase One work program, and it's important to know that the Phase One is already funded. The consultant will be starting this part of the project sometime in the next thirty to sixty days. Uh, and when you look at it, uh, they're going to be doing an inventory and update of the functional classification map and public engagement. But if you take a closer look at the words, next slide, please. You see that what they're, uh, I'm going to be really drilling down into is looking at the approved, pending, and proposed developments by land use type. They're going to assess the land use opportunities, they're going to look at the future corridor and establish a corridor vision. Uh, and they're going to have an extensive public, uh, engagement, uh, program. I think ten community meetings are already identified, a number of neighborhood walking audits, and then quarterly open houses. When we, when I look at this, and we, and this goes back to a question you raised earlier a couple of times, Councilman Dean Felder, about the need to drill down at a much more localized effort and also look at the transit opportunities and the development that is supporting our transit corridors. This, uh, planned study, which will, again, begin shortly, will do exactly that. It's designed to look at the primary transit corridors or the major transit corridors, assess not only the land use that is there today, but the future land use. It gets back to the question of where do we want to guide development? Uh, and where do we want to encourage redevelopment? Uh, and then identify the specific transportation improvement to support that development. We feel that we can support that effort through the Planning Department and also the Planning Commission to, um, leverage the effort that the, uh, mobility and the consultant is working on to provide a much deeper and broader land use and community perspective to make sure that the questions that the community are asking are reflected in the overall mobility plan. At the conclusion of that, uh, that effort, the finding that that will give us a much more refined map of where we think we want growth to be guided, um, and supported along the major transit corridors as well as the major business centers. And then we can come back and refine all the tools that I mentioned earlier in terms of what's in the comp plan and then, uh, amend the comp plan. Uh, next slide. In terms of other, uh, planning efforts, and this is really, uh, a response to a question that Councilman Gould had a couple of weeks ago about the, uh, the plan for, uh, East Tampa. And in our discussion, it was really a larger question than just East Tampa, it was everything in the east side of Tampa. Um, and it really gets back to, and I've mentioned to him that, the the, the current plan right now, when you ask somebody, what is the master plan? It's really the comprehensive plan. And again, there's that two-dimensional image, uh, portion of East Tampa. But we know there's much more going on in East Tampa than just what's in the land use plan and also what's in the comp plan as it is today. There's a number of programs, some of them are listed, uh, listed here. Uh, and so the idea is that as we're able to move forward, uh, both in creating, um, establishing the three-D virtual tools, and then also in the, uh, mobility plan, that we're looking at the various, uh, corridors of development throughout the city, we'll be able to bring in some of these other planning efforts so that we are showing the linkages to the parks, that we are showing how affordable housing fits into over this, this overall mobility strategy. Uh, and then, uh, ideally, hopefully, that, well, we're able to show people, uh, that, uh, wherever they are in the city, they'll be able to pull out the plan, and it'll be much richer and deeper in terms of the information, showing where it is today and where do we hope to see it, uh, in the future. Next slide. This is the schedule of our planning activities, showing, uh, what's underway and what we think, uh, they're going to do. And, uh, again, the Coastal Resiliency Action Plan depends on the award we can't. We're hoping to hear back from the Department of Economic Opportunity in the next, uh, few weeks, um, in which case we'll be able to get started after the first of the year. Next slide, please. So in terms of completing the the studies that, uh, that I've identified, what we hope to be able to get out of those studies, that one, we'll be able to establish a repeatable neighborhood, commercial district planning program that we can use in other areas of the city. We're going to be able to evaluate, revise, and update the growth management strategy, something that we've heard, uh, in many of the comments today, also, uh, what we receive from the community. We're going to be able to refine the priority growth areas through the mobility plan, I think. Uh, we'll be able to about, begin the evaluation of density and intensity of our plan categories, uh, partially through the Hart TOD study, and then a little deeper when we get into the mobility plan. We're going to be able to respond to the development concerns of, uh, residents that are in the hurricane and sea level rise, uh, vulnerable, vulnerability, vulnerability, vulnerable areas. Um, we'll be able, if we get the grant, we'll be able to specifically respond to the concerns of residents in south Gandy area by, uh, developing, developing a plan that will address, uh, the issues and the opportunities, uh, that they have identified. And we'll be able to provide a redevelopment roadmap for Palmetto, Palmetto Beach, excuse me. Um, and then, of course, uh, we'll be able to respond to vulnerable populations in other parts of the city, primaries of low and moderate income areas to tropical storms. As we finish these studies and we begin to, uh, receive the benefits that they provide, we'll be able to amend the Comprehensive Plan, uh, and be able to, uh, memorialize that in the, uh, the comp plan to be able to set the new growth strategy moving forward. to be able to set the new growth strategy moving forward. Next slide. There are a couple of, we have, there were a couple of our staff memos that we might take a moment to be able to summarize for you. And these were two that had to deal with the COVID-related city council meeting cancellations. And then the other was the...
This is the bonus density.
Oh, the bonus density. So I think we have somebody that's going to break in and provide the summary of those two code amendments.
Yep, this is Carol, thanks again. And so in the context, so Suling, if you can bring up the bonus density presentation. Ms. Abby Feely will give a few-minute summary refreshing. We know we've covered a lot of information here and it's to be, there's just a lot that we've really tried to encompass. Some of this has been catching up. For example, these are the last two items we're going to discuss. These date back to late September, late 2019. Memos that had been prepared that were submitted to council, but the council meeting was canceled. They've just never really been fully briefed. And at this point, they now contextually integrate into this overall growth management discussion. So we very much appreciate the patience of letting us bring all of these things together. If there's any silver lining to this, it is that these true growth management planning does require contextualizing all of these things and not dealing with them on one-off bases. So we will finish these last two and then turn back over to the chair and council for discussion. So Abby, you are up, thank you.
Good afternoon, Council, Abby Feely, Director of Development and Growth Management. I am going to cover for you the bonus density intensity provisions, some of the history of that, and put that in perspective for you. And then we will also discuss the lot discussion related to the 5% that council made a motion on. So this first is to go back over some of the history of the city's bonus density and intensity provisions. I know you've seen lately, council, a lot of these applications coming to you that have bonus amendments that are going with them. If we can go to the first slide, please. This was the motion to appear before council and discuss the history of the bonus provisions. Next slide, please. The first bonus provisions really went into and were a result of the 2010 comprehensive plan. And bonus looked at achieving maximum density and intensity. They were done through bonus standards. Initially, there were seven amenities on a list in the Land Development Code, and an applicant put bonus by just meeting one of those. Later, in 2006, it did go to a list of 10, and they were required to meet three of 10. Many of the rezonings I processed before you years ago, those three of 10 were a transit stop, structured parking, and enhanced landscaping. And it often came up even during those times where there was a discussion of whether or not these amenities were actually equitable to the bonus density that the developer was achieving. Later on, in 2007, the CBD and Channel District bonus amenities went in, and this was done through a formula. The formula used land value and construction value and was a 10-to-1 ratio based on square footage because in the CBD periphery and Channel District, it was typically an FAR bonus that came forward before you. Next slide, please. In 2016, the culmination of a lot of those discussions of are we really getting a bonus that's equal to what the developers are receiving, came forth again. And at that time, it was standardized that we were going to use the formula throughout the city. At that time also, the general bonus standards and the Channel District amenities were updated to include more direct link between the formula and the improvements that were being made. Council, you may remember recently you looked at a zoning on North Boulevard that also had a bonus, and the improvements that were going to be funded by that bonus were actually more than a half a mile away. And council, I believe it was Councilman Dinkfelder raised at that time, you know, that's kind of odd. This bonus is going here, but the improvement is going somewhere else. So fair point. Next slide, please. Bonuses are available in the residential districts. These are the land use districts, the R10, R35, R50, and R83. They're also available in the CC35, CMU35, and UMU60. There are buy rights. There was recently an amendment to the comp plan that allowed people to bonus without doing a PD in certain land use categories. And this was along, had come from some discussions of projects along Florida and Nebraska that those, the land use categories gave them an FAR of about one. And the reality is, they needed just a little bit of a bump over that along these corridors to make these mixed-use projects work. So those were amended to allow a bump for vertically integrated projects that had uses from two different use categories that were vertically integrated into one building. The CBD periphery allows for a bonus double. So, and there's a lot of RMU100 there, so that's an FAR of three and a half, which potentially can go up to a seven. I do have some more information about the periphery in just a moment. Seminole Heights has node bonuses. Through preparation of response to your motion, we actually, there are two other bonuses that are in the comp plan that I am not familiar that the city currently executes. And that is the transit-oriented development bonus, which requires a TOD overlay, and then an economic development overlay bonus that is allowed for TOD employment centers and corporate parks. Next slide, please. The CBD periphery, as I previously mentioned, established in the comp plan, allows for potential of 100% increase in floor area ratio. They are required to be under a site plan-controlled zoning. And it really seeks to promote either residential or vertical mixed-use development pattern to support the downtown employment center. It is implemented through the Land Development Code. Next slide, please. I did provide you with a map of the CBD periphery. I recently looked at this in another planning effort, and it was interesting to see that on the west, this does come to North Boulevard. It does run up the center line of North Boulevard. So you have a western portion of the river that is contained within the CBD periphery, does go to Palm Avenue on the north, and it comes down on the east side along Nebraska. And then you'll see it runs that Ebor Channel all the way down to Harbor Island. Those intense red categories there are your RMU100. And also you have CC35 along the red corridors in the center there. And then you can see along the UT side, and you can see Julian Belain on the west side, that big green portion there. And then UT is that PQP blue area there. So this really is looking at bonusing within this area to support the effort in the central business district. Next slide, please. Seminole Heights bonuses, these are established in the Vision Plan. What you see there in the slide is the map that has the smaller circles, which are the neighborhood nodes, and the larger circles, which are those community nodes. And really, those are defining areas where we want to see some additional density and intensity located in order to support commercial, I mean, community amenities. Sorry, next slide, please. The pros and cons of bonus. This is interesting because it does promote the maximization of development through a controlled process. And what's interesting now is it is a PD, so it comes before city council in an effort to demonstrate that compliance and really further the strategic initiatives for the city. It also allows for site plan commitments that are on the plan that could be associated with the bonuses to ensure that it is compatible with the surrounding area. Next slide, please. The negatives, you know, and I think council is aware of this. The bonus has really become a pay-to-play approach. I don't know that that is the intention of how we are looking to direct growth in a more meaningful way. It often results in substantial waivers. I did actually pull who has bonused since 2016. And there have been 433 zonings in this time, but there only have been 12 bonused. So that was interesting. Of the 12 that sought bonus and approval through city council, three were for air-conditioned self, I'm sorry, four were for air-conditioned self-storage. Three were for multifamily, three were for townhome, and one was for a hotel. A common criticism of the bonus is that these, when you go to that maximization of development, you tend to also have large amounts of waivers. So when we're bonusing, we're also giving relief from the code that's not striking a very good balance between the maximization of the development and satisfaction of our code requirements. Also, just go back to that slide for just a minute. In the 10 criteria that came forward, as well as the criteria that are on the books today, affordable housing is one of the bonus amenities, and we have yet to have a single project utilize that. Next, please. My recommendation today would be to reexamine, and I know they're going to talk about recommendations for all of this, so I don't want to spend, but we should reexamine this bonus density intensity, including looking at the formula. Should be a formula that a developer or resident can easily understand, and also an amenity list that seeks to encourage use and refocus the provisions to incentivize and achieve our key priorities. That is the presentation on the bonus. I don't know, Chair, if you'd like to take questions on that now, or if you'd like me to go forward to the 5% lot discussion.
Go to the next one, and then we'll take questions.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
In relation to the 5% lot creation, this was also a motion by council. Occupational hazard, I do watch most rezoning hearings to know what's going on. And I believe I did see this hearing where the motion was made. It was not during my time at the city, but it was a discussion to look at potentially an administrative opportunity to implement the creation of lots that are 5% less than what the city's current standards are. If we can go to the next slide, please. So the comprehensive plan discusses the establishment of single-family detached as a residential unit with open space on all sides. The comp plan does not address what preferred lot sizes or lot dimensions are. It focuses on creating comparable and compatible infill development. The goals and objectives, policies of the plan seek to strike a balance between the preservation of established single-family detached neighborhoods and the promotion of infill development. This goes back to what Randy's saying, we know we have people coming, and we're not annexing any more land in, so it's going to be on the land that we already have. And striking that balance is important. And lastly, it does encourage streamlining development regulations to remove unnecessary requirements or delays in approving and permitting residential development. Next slide, please. Our land development code is really where the guts of the creation of lots are housed. And that is, we provided you here with the definitions of lot, zoning lot, lot width, lot depth, which I know you all are very familiar with, so I will continue. Next slide, please. I think where this gets interesting is in the relation to the lot of record. Many decisions that come before you or applications that come before you may have two-platted lots, but that is one zoning lot. So in order to establish those platted lots back as both being buildable lots, they need a rezoning because they are not a single lot of record, platted deed, in single separate ownership. That's where it gets a little tricky. Single lots of record that have been in single separate ownership are always buildable lots. It's when you have double lots or triple lots that need to then, or are seeking to seek a re-establishment as the platted lot, that it becomes an application before council. We do have lot of record provisions in East Tampa, West Tampa, Seminole Heights, Ebor, and Parkland Estates. And basically, those lot of record provisions say, if you are a lot of record by plat or deed prior to those dates as indicated on the slide, you are a buildable lot. Next slide, please. This is a map of those areas we just discussed with you. Next slide, please. So if you're a legal lot of record in East Tampa, for example, and you're a 48-foot lot, but you're zoned RS50, you are a buildable lot. In East Tampa, we have lot of record provisions for both residential and commercial lots. This is a map of those areas we just discussed with you. Regulations related to lots, the creation of new lots is how it's in Section 2711. And this requires that any new lot must meet the standards of the underlying zoning district, and also that they are completed through a formal decision process. So that example would be if you have two-platted lots, 50 by 100, that are in single ownership right now. So you have 100 by 100 lots. The only way to split those, even though they both meet 50 by 100 for RS50, would be to come through the formal decision process. Non-conforming lots are those which I just mentioned to you. If established to be a non-conforming lot through the formal decision process, the lot can be developed regardless of the developmental requirements as well. So those are all those single separate ownership. If you're double, you can't go back to being single. You are considered one zoning lot, and that requires another action. Go ahead, Steve, next slide. This is just to show you the regulations that run with each of the properties. And next slide. So a 5%, what would that really encompass? In relation to the RS50, that is only 250 square feet. In relation to the RS60, that is 300 square feet. The RS50 and the RS60 are really the largest group that comes before council for consideration of splits. So we wanted to focus on those. I think going back in my review of the documentation and now since I've come on board, what I would like to try to do is get some additional direction from council as to what we are trying to capture in the 5%. Many of you are familiar that the city used to have an 80% rule. And that wasn't looking at it from a kind of reduction side, that was looking from a satisfaction side. If you satisfied 80% of the minimum lot requirement, you could split lots. The 80% rule initially was administrative. It later became a special use. And then finally, the special use went away, and it really became a decision before city council, which is what you have before you today, which is the rezoning process to establish those lots. We would, I'd like to get some additional feedback from you related to that. I would like to make the exercise a meaningful one if we are going to venture down, making it an administrative process. it an administrative process. So we would be looking at what we really think would be a meaningful percentage, and then secondly, what would be the criteria that would run with that percentage for an administrative approval. And we would like to get some feedback from you on that today as part of the workshop, and then look at setting a timeline to come back before you with that information.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Feely at this time, or by any council members?
Ms. Carlson.
Go ahead.
I would like as much as possible to, to enable staff to make decisions on, on some of the, the kind of minor issues that come before us that take a lot of time and money from the public, especially individual property owners. But the question is, will that move the, will that move the expectation further? So if, if these requirements that you were just talking about were in place, and staff could make, can make a decision, if staff says no, will that just push everybody to city council anyway, and then we'll be, have a full agenda dealing with exceptions? Or is there a way that, that we can create a final no, that staff can, staff says no, and they don't come to city council afterwards?
I think we will need to work through that as part of the process. Most of our administrative processes do have an appeal opportunity, and that does come back before you. So I, I think I would need to confer with the legal department on that when we bring it back to you as to what the strategy would be for accomplishing that.
Do you have any question?
Councilman Deanfeld.
I didn't know. Mr. Carlson, if you weren't done, I didn't want to interrupt.
I'm done, thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
I'm coming in clear, because I heard I was garbled earlier.
You're very coming in clear, you're good.
All right. Billy, again, welcome back, your valuable addition, and glad to have you back. In regard, in response to Mr. Carlson's comment, we, I think we always had this tension, Bill. On the one hand, you know, sometimes our zoning agendas get massive, and it feels like we're dealing with really minimus issues of, you know, a zoning, a zoning opportunity that might be one or two feet short, and we're, and we spend a lot of time on it, and we're just, we scratch our heads, and I'm sure this is your feeling, Bill, we scratch our heads, and we wonder why are we dealing with this? You know, this, this lot is 48 feet wide, and it needs to be 50 feet wide, and, you know, so maybe, you know, maybe it could or should be decided by staff, but then the flip side is, if it's decided by staff, then typically, the, the citizens, the neighbors, and the neighborhood association does not have a whole lot of involvement. And, and then people scratch their head in the, out of the community, and they say, hey, how did that happen? You know, so I think that that's the tension that we're, that we're faced with. And one of the ways, I think legal, I have spoken about this in the past, over at the county, I don't think they do a lot of things great, but I think one of the things they do different in the county is that they have a zoning hearing master process, that instead of us having two readings at city council, we could have a zoning hearing master who handles the first reading, you know, for zonings, et cetera, and then we get the second, and then we get the second reading with a recommendation from the zoning hearing master. It's not a binding recommendation, but it's a recommendation. So I don't know if Ms. Grimes wants to chime in on that when I'm done. Um, and then the, so that, that's sort of a compromised middle, middle position in a way to perhaps shorten up some of our, some of our zoning agendas. Ms. Feely, I did have a question for you. You said that in regard to the legal lot of record, that in some of the overlay districts, and I think you showed East Tampa, West Tampa, some of the places, which again is probably at least a third, if not more of the, it's probably half of the original city limits without New Tampa. Why, why do we distinguish, and, and when was it decided to distinguish between the overlay districts and the rest of the city?
I believe that when we put the overlays in to encourage development, the legal lot of record was established. Because there are smaller lots in that area, and in order to acknowledge that they are in fact buildable, and not create, I don't want to call them dead lots, but lots that could not be redeveloped within that area, it acknowledged that there was an inventory of those lots and gave them the ability. Now, they still have to meet all of the regulations that run with, you know, an RS 50 property, for example, if they're 42 feet, I mean, in, in West Tampa, there's some platted lots of record that are 25 feet, which were typically and historically used as shotgun houses. So even today, they would still have to meet, and in West Tampa, you know, they use averaging for the front and other things, but they then still have to meet the standards that are placed on those lots.
All right, well, that's, that's a good answer. So the, so the bottom line is, when we created those overlay districts, and I think we started creating them the last time I was here, when we created them, it was with the intent to encourage redevelopment, and, and basically, the legal lot of record standard is, if it's truly a vacant lot, not attached, not, it hasn't been combined or conjoined with the adjacent lot, then that's when that, that rule plugs in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilman Goode.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Good presentation, long. I think it's kind of complicated for some of the viewers at home. I've got text messages in reference to some of the information. Mr. Deanfeld did take a little bit away from what I was going to talk about. I know the county does have a different process for these zoning, because, you know, sometimes we're very, very weak to the night. I think this, you may want to reference to these cases, and possibly the more complicated ones, maybe, or appeal to the council for final approval. Number one. Number two, the, Field, you could tell me that those numbers for that bonus density, I, those kind of wide, wide ranges, there's no numbers for housing. Can you hear those numbers again?
For the, for the bonus density?
Yes, that, that, the numbers you calculated, that's going towards housing.
None of the bonus have executed affordable housing as one of their bonus amenities.
Any reason why, do we know, have an idea?
Through my experience, it was more that they didn't want to have to commit to keep the property. There was no incentive, they could fulfill other bonus amenities at far less risk and far greater advantage than being able to commit those units for affordable housing. So I think what we need to do is, when we're looking back at that now, is really look to incentivize that, and that is one of our, our key focus areas in meeting that critical need, so that we could formulate the bonus in a more meaningful way to address that better.
Just a question from, I don't know if we could go there now, but just a question. I guess for the overall presentation, I, I look at all these new names that might be changed, and departments of planning and growth, I guess it's for, because of Carol Post, I, I, when I look at this whole presentation, it, it strikes up, again, when we're talking about people and communities, and who have developed, we talk about housing and real estate. And I thought a while ago, we had talked about, and I thought that possibly the housing division and real estate will be merged, because when you look at a lot of these, this planning, really kind of falls in perversity a little bit. And I'm just kind of curious, how come that isn't being developed? Because when you look at our real estate and housing, it works kind of hand in hand. The left, there's no, the right's doing, I think that's why we kind of go kind of off, off-road here. So I was just wondering about that, Ms. Post.
Councilman Goode, this is Carol Post. I appreciate the question. We do have for, and you are correct, our real estate services group and our housing and community development group are an integral part of the development and growth management portfolio. In fact, they are running on a parallel path to, just to the prior point, to establish a whole new set of incentives that will drive an economic, a better economic model for private developers to pursue affordable housing. That is a soon-to-come agenda item. Frankly, there was so much to put together into this presentation, which was intended to address those, I think it's 11 motions that we've, we've been trying to catch up with, that I, I think it would have been overcrowded to bring in the housing and real estate services aspects. But those are running parallel, and those will be before you in the very short future. And they do integrate into this. So in fact, we do have a set to, to bring us to final conclusion on this presentation. There is a last slide with the eight recommendations that represent the culmination of all of this content and material, including the two items that Abby Feely just presented. And we think that those, in combination, present our long-term plan for driving and managing growth, as well as integrating our most greatest, our greatest needs, reflecting the community's input, as well as the housing and real estate inputs that you're raising. I hope that's responsive to your question.
A little bit, but I'm, I was just hoping that, that those will be viewed together as a department, versus saying they're just integral parts of, of some of the picture. I just think that, that, that group, especially when you're doing housing, because housing has a lot going on, I think they have a lot on their plate. But I think that when you look at the real estate department, I think all that should be defused as one whole big department, so everybody's working hand in hand, and maybe able to give an extra little assistance to housing, versus, you know, you're going to do a planning division, you've got a growth and benefit department, you just look at, looking at those departments as far as housing and real estate, need to be as one whole compartment. That way, a lot of questions can be answered throughout that department, versus trying to reach this person, reach that person, to get some master or progress moving. So I'm hoping that, while we're still in the working phase, that we truly look at that, and making that housing division a really robust department, making that the focal point, what's going, because housing is a crucial point right now. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Remember that we have a few more items, and we have a special call meeting after this, and we go into our evening, our afternoon session at 5:01 PM, so.
Mr. Chair, can I just say one final thing?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just, to the whole presentation, this is incredibly valuable, and I think it is exactly what government should be doing. You know, in years past, there was a lot of planning in and around downtown, and what the citizens have said is, they want planning around their neighborhoods. And I think that the city council and mayor's office administration are now aligned in looking throughout the city to do planning. We're not going to ignore downtown, we're going to continue planning there, but, but we're, we're seriously looking at, at, at the communities and, and neighborhoods. And I appreciate the work of, of all the folks involved, in particular Randy and, and Carol Post, who have been working closely with me on the neighborhood commercial district issue and, and some of these other things. All of this is really important to how people experience our city, especially with COVID, people have been spending more time at home, and they're seeing things that they didn't see before. And I think, although not many people are probably watching today, the, the people who find out about this will be very thankful that we did, and they'll see the results of it. I know you have some recommendations on next steps, and to any of the community leaders, neighborhood leaders who are watching today, we're not going to solve, I don't even know if we're allowed to make motions today, but we're not going to solve all the issues today. But please just think about this as the first major effort in, in, in the city, city council, mayor's office, looking seriously at these issues, and taking your thoughts and concerns seriously, and we're going to really try to develop a robust plan to help move our city forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
All right. Yes, Councilman Goode.
Very quickly, I, I had something brought to my attention the other day, a couple of times, matter of fact, I just want the, the viewers to know that I've heard what they're saying, but I want Ms. Post and the planning divisions to understand as well. East Tampa is a, is a unique place, and we, we kind of, we're focusing on the lower half of Hillsborough Avenue, you know, King, but the folks to the north a little bit, you know, people consider East Tampa the whole east section of the city. And when you look at the north end of town, to where you say, across Hillsborough Avenue, we have certain program or things going on, they feel they're left out, because they feel they're considered as East Tampa as well, and it seems like, I know we're doing a lot of work in the bottom half, which we've got to get that worked on too, but I just want to let staff know that also the folks on the northern portion of Hillsborough Avenue feel that at times, they get left out a lot of programs, and they feel that they're East Tampa as well, which they are, up until about Sly Avenue, and once you get past Sly going around, we get into our north end of town, with Selfish Springs, we've, we've got to help them as well, issues there as well. But I just want people to understand that I've heard their call, and that the planning and growth division know that there is a north part of the east part of town. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Ms. Post, I believe you have, there's more, a few more slides after this, or one more slide?
We actually just have one more slide, if Suleen can bring up our final recommendations. Many of them have already been addressed by Randy within the, within the presentation, but there are a couple that I think we would like to just get on the radar for council members for further discussion, and then we can move on. Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Counselors Randy Gores, the city planning department, these are the recommendations that we put forth. One, we talked about earlier, about looking at the mixed-use plan categories and recommending some updates for that. We want to implement the visualization tools, begin the process of updating the comprehensive plan. This is the most significant one. This will address many of the issues that we want to, that have been talked about today and raised to us. Abby talked about the, the zoning administrator and evaluating bonus density provisions. The considering alternative solutions to promote design compatibility, we want to find a better solution than the form-based code, or at least a better solution than telling people we can't do it because of resources. We want to find a solution that affects more neighborhoods, or that have similar issues. There are a couple of suggestions that could be investigated. These are coming from, these are things that we've heard, we wanted to put them down, that could be considered in, in the future. One could be investigating the merits of prohibiting variances or design exceptions in specified locations, that, that would really just allow people just to develop exactly to the code. And the other one, again, is just something that we've heard, that we wanted to reflect that is a possible suggestion, is considering suspending plan amendments and rezonings for multi-family in coastal, in the coastal high-hazard areas, in the comprehensive plan and land development code, or the comprehensive plan and land development code can be updated accordingly. Those are considerations that we've heard, we wanted to make sure that they are possible recommendations and, and things to pursue in the future.
So Chair, that, that concludes the presentation. Again, thank you so much for it. We're happy to take any questions or feedback on those recommendations, and, and then moving forward, you can proceed with agenda item 11 when you're ready. Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Chairman, question?
Go ahead, Councilman Deanfeld.
Just procedurally, Mr. Chairman, they had a list, if you can put that list back up, they had a list of recommendations, I think they're, at some point, they want for us to, I guess it's the last page, they want to look to us to see which way we want to go, or, but that's what I think, it looks like some of these are going to be going forward with anyway, but then there's others, a few others toward the end of the list, they, that it looks like they might need a little more direction on. When, when would you like the discussion, Mr. Chairman? That's question number one. And question number two, from me to you, Carol, is, I think that the, the review of the comprehensive plan via the moves program is a good one. The only thing I found a little bit disheartening is the fact that it, it said just the review and analysis was going to take 18 months, and, and I know that to do that, it will take another year or more to actually implement, so we're looking at like a, a two- or three-year process. I know I'm not telling you anything, but is there any way to shorten up the 18-month moves analysis to, to be?
the 18-months moves analysis to, to be maybe a year instead?
We can look into that. We, you know, this is, we're going to, we're trying to, um, kind of add our initiative into one that is existing and being driven on the transportation and mobility front. So I don't want to disrupt that plan for sure, but perhaps there's a way to carve out some of the things we're looking to do offline and accelerate those. We'll look into it. Thank you.
And the last thing I was going to say, Mr. Chairman, before I look for you for direction on, on what to deal with these recommendations. I reached out to the expressway authority in regard, uh, Mr. Gowers. You, you had mentioned about, you know, a lot of the traffic coming across the Gandy will be, you know, will go upstairs on the, on the top. And I, and I think it's a wonderful project and I've always been supportive of it for 20 years, in terms of the Gandy, um, double decorating the Gandy like we are. But, but over at the expressway authority, they indicate they're looking at about 35% of the traffic to go over the top. So we still have a significant amount of Pinellas traffic to and from that's going to stay down at local level. So I just wanted everybody to be aware of that. But Mr. Mr. Chairman, what, what direction would you say we should go in regard to this discussion on their recommendation?
Well, in regards to the recommendations, I think, uh, unless any, there's any objection, I think we should come back, uh, November 19th, which is a regular city council session. So the public can digest this, we can reflect upon these recommendations. Some we may find consensus, uh, more quickly than others. But, uh, you know, it's a lot of information. We've, we've been here, um, a long time today because there, there was a lot to present. But, um, I think this should come back under staff reports, at the November 19th meeting, which gives a little under a month unless, um, Ms. Post, if you would like more time. But I think, you know, that we've presented all this and considering how the virtual meeting is, because usually after every workshop, we allow the public to speak. Now they've heard it all at once, but, you know, to give the people an opportunity to speak, uh, you know, perhaps next month or longer, if, if you feel we need longer.
Chair, we're, we're comfortable with November 19th if that works for the council.
Uh, council members. Okay, any, uh, any objection to it or any comments regarding that?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Goode, yes, sir.
I, I, I'm fine with that. But again, I would ask when they come back, uh, that, uh, Ms. Post, again, look at, at those two departments, uh, real estate and housing. I, I think that's very vital, uh, for what we've got going on in this city. So hopefully we can come back with some ideas about that, better ideas. I know she said they've got some different areas here, but I think, again, it's very crucial that those departments be together because I think they want hand in hand. I yield back, sir.
All right, uh, Mr. Shelby, do we need an official motion for that? That, um, Ms. Post comes back and staff reports in November 19th? All right.
That would be greatly appreciated.
Mr. Chairman, so this will be brought to regular 19th.
All right, uh, we have motion from Councilman Miranda, who is the second?
City council meeting during the day.
The second seat, true.
Today meeting. Yes, sir, so it'll be November 19th, regular city council meeting under staff reports for the, uh, for the morning. And we have a second from Councilman Citro. Any objections?
Danielle Bullock, City Clerk's Office, could I have a clarification of the motion, please?
So the, uh, Ms. Post presented eight, um, recommendations. I'd like that, you know, for clarification, the motion will be for November 19th under staff reports. So that'll give a chance for council to, uh, think about, reflect upon these recommendations and for the public to, uh, be able to speak on it now that, you know, give them time to di- digest everything. But it's based on the eight recommendations to come back under staff reports November 19th. The motion was made by Councilmember Miranda with a second from Councilmember Citro.
Thank you.
All right, uh, is there any objection to the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Goode?
I don't have an objection to the motion because you specifically said those eight criteria that are set forth on the screen here. But like I said, I would like them to come back with information or detailing of housing and real estate to be a part of this recommendation suggestion, sir.
Ms. Post, is that all right? Uh, maker of the motion, Councilmember Miranda, is that all right to add that?
May the council members approve that, I'm fine with that.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda with a second from Councilman Citro. Any objection on the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Shelby.
Martin Shelby, yes, thank you. Can we have that, um, I don't want to make that a separate, necessarily separate part of the motion because it's, it's, it's part of the discussion. But I think when the clerk does list the, um, eight recommendations or this chart is here to, um, to, to put that as a, a, a separate matter of discussion so that it doesn't in some form or fashion be conceived to be that a recommendation of part of the eight. Do you understand why I'm asking that question?
Do you want to make a vote on it?
Pardon?
Chair Maniscalco? Chair Maniscalco? Hi, it's Carol Post. Just a, a brief suggestion, um, we very much support the, the, uh, motion re- with respect to the eight recommendations and bringing that back for further deliberation. And with respect to, uh, Councilman Goode's request for more information about the joiner of real estate services and housing and community development, I'm happy to, um, report back on that under staff reports at the, uh, November 19th meeting as well, without there necessarily being a motion. I, I would agree not to conflate it with the eight recommendations concerning growth management. If there is a separate motion on that point, that's fine, but I'm, I'm happy to and will be accountable to deliver on that, uh, even if there is not a specific motion for it.
Does that work for everyone?
That was me, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm, I'm satisfied with that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor.
Stand alone, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the motion made by Councilmember Miranda with a second from Councilmember Citro, uh, all in favor of the motion, uh, well, is there any objection to this motion? Hearing none by unanimous consent and no objection, the motion is made for November 19th under staff reports. Uh, Mr. Shelby, do we need a separate motion for what Councilmember Goode requested? Or per the words of Carol Post, is that okay?
It's at the pleasure of the councilman. Councilman Goode's?
I'm, I'm good with that. She's already, she's already made it on record of what she will do, so I don't, I don't probably make that, not make a motion.
Thank you, sir.
Will she bring it back, that's fine.
All right, um, that leads us to item number 11 and item 13. Who would like to begin with item number 11? Regarding amplified, uh, sound and.
Good afternoon, counsel. LaShawn Doc with Development and Growth Management, can you hear me good?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Thank you so much. And, um, this is item number 11. And this is, um, a discussion regarding hours of operation, amplified outdoor sound and distance separation. And, um, counsel, I would like to, um, just announce that I have with me today, Susan Johnson Velez, um, with senior assistant city attorney Mike Schmidt, assistant city attorney, and Simone Savino, assistant city attorney. And next slide, please. What I want to discuss, what is the, um, a motion that was originally made by council was a request for staff to come back and provide recommendations for reduced closing times in chapter 14, um, regarding the hours of operation and to have a discussion regarding distance separation as well as the amplified outdoor sound. So what I wanted to do today is to break that motion up into the discussion. We start with the hours of operation first, um, and see the information we have. Slide, please. So in discussing the hours of operation, what we did was we wanted to take a look at the current code as it exists today. So currently in chapter 14, the hours of operation are found in section 14 dash 150.1. And you can see from the table that the hours of operation are actually listed by the hours in which alcoholic beverages can be sold in addition to the hours where businesses are allowed to be open. You may or may not recall in 2016, this was recently amended, um, this section of the code regarding the hours. Previously, it only listed the hours that alcoholic beverages could be sold. So, um, there was a concern from restaurant owners that they wanted to be open on Sundays early to be able to serve breakfast prior to the time that they're allowed to sell. So that's when the code was amended. The hours they're allowed to be open for business was added to this section of the code. So what we done is on this, you can see that the hours are broken out by the type of establishment. You have the hotel and motel, your retail stores and convenience goods and shoppers' goods. Those are allowed to be open for business 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The restaurants are allowed to open at 7:00 AM every day of the week till 3:00 AM. All of the types of establishments, this would include your bar lounges, your large and small venues, those are allowed to open at 7:00 AM each day, Monday through Saturday and closing at 3:00 AM. And on Sunday, they're allowed to open at 11:00 AM and they would, um, close at 3:00 AM. Now, for all of those categories, the hours in which alcoholic beverages can be sold is 7:00 AM to 3:00 AM, Monday through Saturday, and on Sunday, starting at 11:00 AM to 3:00 AM. So there are a couple of things, counsel, just to mention. In consideration of amending the hours, we should look at what is approved and the current hours that exist for locations currently. Um, and also in reviewing the transcripts from the original hearing with the data of the original motion, um, staff felt the request was geared towards restaurant and bar lounge uses. So we hope during this discussion today, we can hone in and get better direction from council as to the type of uses we're looking to reduce the hours on. But we base this upon restaurant and bar lounge uses. And next slide, please. So what we did was we just took a sampling of the locations, um, within the city. We took it by area. So there are at least eight locations that are listed here. Um, and this is just a snapshot of what's listed on the hours of operation. What's listed in the chart are the weekday closing times, the weekend closing times, and then we also provided the Sunday closing times if they were different from the weekend closing times. Um, you can see from this, from this sampling that the weekend closing times, um, you have some that are closing prior to midnight at 11 and into midnight, and then you have a few that are closing after midnight, 1, 2, and 3:00 AM. One thing to note is that this is a list that was taken online. So we basically went online, pulled the data of what was listed. So we are aware and we just want to mention for the public that we're taking into consideration, we're in the middle of COVID. And these hours as listed just may be adjusted because of COVID. It may not be the actual operating hours, but that's what we have, um, presented here. Next slide, please. When we're looking at what's currently approved, we're also, um, taking into consideration the number of alcoholic beverage sales permits that have been issued. So there are a total of 1,454 alcoholic beverage sales permits for the city of Tampa. And this is inclusive of all categories for alcohol sales. This chart identifies specific categories where you could have either a restaurant or a bar lounge. And that's what's listed here. You can see the highest one is the restaurant category at 458 permits issued. And the next in line are the four COPs at 253 permits issued. So when we look at this chart, you'll have the newer classifications from 2010 forward for alcoholic beverage sales designations. What we also must consider are the older approvals, which were under the prior wet zone designation. The one COP, the two COP, and ours, along with the four COPs. Next slide, please. This is a map showing that breakdown of the restaurant number. On the previous slide, you saw there were 458, um, approvals. This shows throughout the city where these are located. Just to give you an idea of the proximity, um, you'll see a lot of them are located along a lot of the major commercial corridors. With this also, you'll see that there's the breakout. When you talk about the restaurant designation, it, it also provides you the number of designations that have the R designation. Um, we have 305 locations, we have 16 locations that are restaurants, and then we have special restaurants and, um, we have 137 locations. Next slide, please. So with this being said, one thing is we, um, staff kept in mind that this, um, motion was made prior to COVID. But we're asking just to consider that the existing number of locations with previously approved closing times, and with reduced hours being put into effect, it would create an inconsistency for establishment. You could have one establishment that has one closing time and new establishments that are under a new criteria. Another item to consider is that new locations under modified closing times would not necessarily address any issues which may exist currently with establishments that just may not be in compliance. Also, there's an existing administrative process that we have in place for restaurants. If the idea is reduced closing times for restaurants, we have a special restaurant designation, which is an administrative approval. So these are ones that council would not see. It was actually put into place to incentivize, to provide that incentive to an owner to apply for an administrative review, get through the process quicker and have an earlier closing time for their business operations. Another thing is also, um, the hardship which may exist on current locations just due to the COVID crisis. We're asking lastly, that if council desires to amend the code to modify the closing times, staff's recommending that we hold a series of public workshops with the public, business operators and property owners just to provide, so they can provide feedback on any proposed changes. Next slide, please. So that was the hours of operation. What I'd like to touch upon now is the distance separation. And just review, um, the current requirements in the code regarding distance separation. This is one where, at the end of our discussion, we can, at the end of this presentation, we can have a discussion and get further direction from council as to where we would go with the distance separation. But next slide, please. Currently in chapter 27, there are two areas for, um, providing distance separation. Back of slide, please. So there's one area where, when we're looking at distance separation, you have areas that are required to provide distance separation and areas that are not required to provide distance separation. So all of the special use one applications within the OP1 zoning district with the following AB designations, which are bar lounge, shoppers' goods and restaurants, they're required to provide distance separation. All special use two applications, which are bar lounge, restaurant and small and large venue, they are required to provide distance separation. The bar lounge must provide a thousand-foot separation from residential and institutional and other AB establishments. The areas not required.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, could, could, could that slide be advanced? Are you on the right slide, um, Ms. Doc, that one?
Down one, down one.
One more?
Down one.
Forward or back?
So back, the distances are back.
That's good, that, it can stay there on that, thank you. The areas not required to provide, um, distance separation are the special use one applications, which are for the hotel, the bowling alley and the shoppers' goods, special restaurant and bar lounge. Those are not required to provide distance separation. The special use one applications within the OP1 zoning district have the following, um, distance separation and that's 250 feet from single-family residential uses, places of religious assembly, and from schools. For the special use two applications, they have the following distance separation requirements and they're based upon their area. So within the business centers, West Shore and USF, 250 feet. So within the business centers, west shore and USF, 250 feet required from residential uses. Within urban villages, 250 feet from other AB establishments. And along mixed-use corridor villages, 250 feet from residential and other AB sales establishments. All other areas of the city is a thousand feet. And that's a thousand feet from residential uses, institutional uses, and other AB sales establishments. Next slide, please.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question before she move on?
Yes.
You heard earlier, a lot of citizens called in in reference to restaurants turning into bars after hours and they're in residential buildings. I don't think we have anything in our code in reference to that, because that's a new trend, having bars inside of these residential high-rises or big apartments, do we?
Correct. We do. Well, we have the distance separation from residential. And what happens is when we have a location that has, say, ground floor commercial and they have residents above, then they have to request the distance separation and they will reduce it to zero. A waiver through the waiver.
The petitioner asks us for the waiver?
Correct. Because they would not-
I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry. Yes, because they would not need distance separation. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, if I can, I just have a question just for the purposes of the public and also for council to refresh their recollection, the distinction between a special use one and a special use two, so that the public knows the distinction between the two. And again, within the urban villages, you said that there is no distance separation with regard to residences, but there is other alcoholic beverages?
Yes. So the special use one application is an administrative review. So it is done strictly administratively. It would not go before council. There's no public hearing process. About a 30-day timeframe for processing. A special use two is a public hearing process. It requires city council approval. And through the, with the special use two, the distance separations are broken out by area. And within the urban villages, they are required 250 feet, but only from other AB establishments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead, Councilman Dinkfelder.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Shawn, throwing away all the variances that all the existing alcohol beverages, alcohol sales in this city, with this separation requirement, how many would be conforming? Throughout the years, waivers have been granted for distance separation. And in my estimate, maybe half of the alcohol sales in this city would be non-conforming.
Yes, Councilman, and I actually have that data on the next slide of how- Sure. Sure. If we can go to the next slide, please. So this is the distance separation waivers that have been granted. This is the data from 2015 through 2019. And so what is provided is you'll see the institutional uses are the areas in blue. The bars that are in orange are the residential uses. And the other AB establishments are in gray. So those are the three distance separation waivers that could be granted. The areas, the bars that are yellow are the total number of cases. So if you look at the yellow numbers, that's the total number, some sort of waiver has been granted. So in 2015, there was a total of 21 that were granted. In 2016, there were 30. 2017, there was a total of 25. But within those waivers, these are the different types that were granted. And once the waivers are granted, Councilman, just to your point, it is conforming. If the applicant requests a waiver as a part of their approval through that special use two process and that waiver and the site plan has been approved, then they are conforming. And then the next slide, please. This is the same data that is shown. This is just giving you the percentages regarding each category for distance separation. This is from 2015 through 2019. So the areas in blue are the institutional uses. The areas in orange are the residential uses. And then the areas in gray are the other AB establishments. So this gives you the percentages by year of how often these separation waivers were utilized and granted by city council. And next slide, please. So that concludes the data for the distance separation. What I'm going to do now is get ready to hand it over to Mike Schmidt to discuss our outdoor amplified sound.
We'll shut down a question or two before we move on to the-
Councilman Dingfelder.
Okay. Just for clarification, LaShawn, going back to what Mr. Shelby was asking, on the SU-1, there's no public process, just administrative review. However, they can't come in for an SU-1 unless they meet those criteria. Is that correct?
That is correct, Councilman. Correct.
So what is the distance criteria? What is the distance criteria for SU-1?
250 feet from single-family residential, places of religious assembly, and schools in the OP-1.
Yeah. And also 250 feet to one-
I'm sorry. I couldn't understand the question.
Is it also 200? Am I garbling?
No, you're good. Go ahead.
Okay. Is it also 250 feet from one establishment to another on the SU-1?
No. On the SU-1 is the single-family residential. It does not include other establishments, other AB establishments.
Okay. And my next question goes back to hours of operation.
Yes.
The, so our, council faces this pretty regularly when these do come in. The default position right now for new application is 3:00 a.m., correct? I think that that becomes problematic. They've been allowed to discuss the recommendations and where we go from here, and maybe that's on November 19th. I think we really need to take a strong look at that default position. Because legal can chime in here, but I think the default position should be somewhere around, you know, 10:00 p.m. on weekdays and 11:00 p.m. on weekends. And that should be the default position. And then if somebody wants to come in and justify why they should expand that, then that would be the exception that they would ask for. So that's sort of a, more of a statement than a question. But I think that when we get down to looking at changes, I think we should look to do that. The other question I have, LaShawn, is on the urban, you mentioned the OP-1. What's the OP-1?
Office professional district.
Okay. So in the urban villages, the urban villages, which again is, represents a huge amount of the city, somewhere along the line, we dropped the requirement for a separation of 250 feet for the SU-2?
Yes.
You know when that was dropped and why?
I can't say the exact time that it was dropped or why. I would have to research to see when it was. And that's for the villages or either business centers is when it requires the 250 feet. All other areas of the city are a thousand.
Right. But the urban village includes, you know, East Tampa, West Tampa, you know, huge tons of- of our residential neighborhoods. But now, for some reason, we dropped the 250-foot requirement to residential. And I don't know, I don't know when that happened. Ms. Feely, do you remember when that happened?
Could you repeat the question, please, Mr. Dingfelder?
In the urban villages, there's no longer requirement for 250 feet separation to residential. I, back in the day, there used to be a requirement. Then this urban village concept came in, and now there's no longer a requirement. When?
I believe it's when we changed the alcoholic beverage from wet zonings to special uses. Back, that was 2008, 2009. I believe that's when we modified those requirements.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Well, I guess we'll address some of the changes. Thank you.
And Councilman Dingfelder, just as a point of clarification for the hours of operation that are default, if the hours are not specified, then they would default and it will fall to Chapter 14. So applicants can specify their hours of operation, and they can put that on the site plan for approval. It isn't always that 3:00 a.m. Just to clarify-
I understand.
Yes.
I understand. But most of the time, when they come, by the time they get to council, we often see the default, which is 3:00 a.m., and then we have to argue our way back to something more reasonable. So frankly, this councilman's opinion is the default should be earlier and let them argue their way into the hours. Anyway, that's just my opinion. Thanks.
Sure thing. Okay. The next slide, please. And so this is regarding the outdoor amplified sound. To start this discussion, we wanted to first just review for the outdoor amplified sound where that applies in Chapter 27. So it is under the special use criteria for alcoholic beverage sales. You'll see on this chart for bar lounge and nightclub, only in the CBD. For the special use one, no outdoor amplified sound is allowed after 1:00 a.m. For bar lounge and nightclub in the office professional, the office professional one in the west shore overlay district, no outdoor amplified sound after 1:00 a.m. And for special restaurants, there's no outdoor amplified sound permitted after 11:00 p.m. For special use twos, for bar lounge and nightclub, it's not permitted unless you're in a large-scale commercial development of 500,000 square feet or more. And for special restaurant, it is not a special use two designation at all, so it's not applicable. Also, just to mention, sidewalk cafes, they are not permitted to have outdoor amplified music. Our sidewalk cafes are annual permits that are granted, and it's for the outdoor area, which, once approved, it could allow you to extend your alcoholic beverage sales to the outdoor area of your establishment. But the sidewalk cafes are not permitted to have the outdoor amplified sound. And the next slide, please. And I'm going to turn it over to Mike Schmidt at this point to review with you the history regarding the outdoor amplified sound.
Good afternoon, Mike Schmidt, Assistant City Attorney. I'm going to give you a little background about Chapter 14, Article 3, noise. In 2006, the noise ordinance was revised to enforce by decibel levels. This was done so that enforcement of all City of Tampa was enforcing noise through decibel levels using decibel meters. This was done in conjunction with EPC, Environmental Protection Commission Agency with Hillsborough County. They also enforce noise in the county as well as in the city. In 2013, the city again looked at the noise ordinance. Excessive noise from motor vehicles was expressly prohibited. In addition, the ordinance was amended on excessive noise to create a prima facie evidence when plainly audible after 10:00 p.m. in certain areas of town. Those areas were the parts of town other than Central Business District, Ebor, and Channel District. Those three districts were still to be enforced using the decibel level meter readings. These areas still today remain, well, I'm sorry. At the time, those three areas were 85 dB between 6:00 p.m. and 3:00 a.m. In 2014, council again wanted to revisit noise, but there was a lawsuit pending. And based on that, the item was held until 2016. In 2016, city council did revisit noise. After numerous workshops and meetings, the noise ordinance was amended in 2016. It removed decibel enforcement in all areas except Ebor, Central Business District, and the Channel District. It made punishment as a civil citation of $150. It required a five-minute warning, which lasted for 48 hours. In 2016 as well, there was pretty much an entire rewrite of the excessive noise ordinance. 2018 came along, and there had been some complaints with regards to residential units downtown. And so city council looked at the ordinance again. In 2018, decided that the Central Business District was going to be moved into 14154 for enforcement, which is allowing for the plainly audible standard to be enforced rather than just by decibels. So downtown was removed from decibel levels. And now, as of 2018, the only places with decibel level measurements would be the Arena District, Ebor, and Channel District. Those three, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
We have different slides because we're stuck on one slide.
Yes. I'm sorry. We only put in the definitions. I'm sorry, we didn't detail all the history of this.
Okay. That's fine. I just wanted to make sure we're on this-
Yes, sir. So as of 2018, that was the last time city council amended the ordinance. And where we currently stand, as I said, is, just to be clear, the Arena District, Ebor, and the Channel District are the three areas that noise is enforced by decibel levels. It requires an 85 decibel level after 6:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m. to be, to create a violation. It requires a five-minute warning for those areas, and that warning lasts for 48 hours. In the rest of the City of Tampa, there are three ways to prove a violation, and it's not done by decibel level. And those ways, those three ways include, at all times, one of the ways, so basically think of like three elevators. There's three different ways to get to the top to prove a violation. One way is that at all times, you can, if an officer is called out and the person agrees to be seen, the officer can go inside the residence and see if the noise is plainly audible within the residence. If they can hear it or they can feel the vibrations and thumping, that would be one way to prove a violation. Another way is if the person completes an affidavit and submits the affidavit, and it meets all sorts of certain factors that are provided out in the code. And the third way is there is a prima facie evidence that the noise is unreasonably excessive if you can plainly audibly hear it from 100 feet or more after 10:00 p.m. There have been legal bulletins to help train the officers on all these things. And that's basically where we are with regards to Chapter 14. And I will, can I turn it back over to Houston again? And I'll turn it back over to LaShawn to talk about comparison of other jurisdictions.
Next slide, please. Okay. And what we did was we took a look at other jurisdictions just to see how they handled actually outdoor amplified sound, whether it's through definition, how they are enforcing it. What we did was we took a look at St. Pete. And some jurisdictions, they define outdoor amplified sound, and other jurisdictions use different phrases to define sound. So St. Pete, they use loud and raucous. Their hours, they're not permitted to have the sound after 11:00 p.m. So they have between 11:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. They're not permitted. But Sarasota, they don't have the outdoor amplified- But Sarasota, they don't have the outdoor amplified sound defined in the code. But they do have permitted hours restricted for these areas, which are the beach and pool from Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And Sunday, 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. In Orlando, they do define outdoor amplified sound. They, we couldn't find the hours, the hours permitted were not readily available online. Jacksonville, they do not define it. Same thing, the hours were not specified. In Fort Lauderdale, they do define outdoor amplified sound and it is not permitted after 11:00 p.m. And the next slide, please. And council, that concludes the information that we have regarding those three subjects. The hours of operation, the distance separation and the outdoor amplified sound. And we certainly want to open it up for discussion at this point and direction from council.
Any questions from council?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead, Councilman Citro.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Mr. Shonda and Mr. Schmidt. In the years that I spent sitting in council chambers before I was elected, the prior council had made many, many, many comments, especially Councilwoman Yoli Kapine, on amplified music. Would it be easier to change our codes of ordinance just to have no app outside or outdoor amplified music to be the standard in our codes unless the applicant asks for a waiver or an exception and if requested, justified and granted? Because that's not the way it is now. As we're seeing more and more AB sales going into residential areas, we're having the residents complaining that they don't want to hear amplified music after a certain period of time. If I'm, if I'm in a neighborhood and I'm trying to get to sleep at night, at 12:00 at night and the AB sales right next to me is playing music until 1:00 o'clock in the morning, then that's kind of violating my time. Can we change the code? Would it be recommended to change the code to have no amplified music at all? And if a waiver is requested by the petitioner, then city council could take a look at it.
Councilman, we can certainly take a look at that. We can amend chapter 27. And we would have to amend the conditions that state for certain uses because we do now classify the AB sales by the use. And we would have to make that a standard that no outdoor amplified sound is allowed. And if they wanted it, they would have to come to council and have it granted through the waiver.
I personally would like that. It seems that every time that there is a petition for a new alcohol sales, one of us on council always says, is there going to be amplified music? Or would you commit to not having amplified music? I just feel it would be better the other way around. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Council.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Also, if I may, one thing that we have noticed in the research and we just know through code, we do not have outdoor amplified sound defined in the code. One thing that we wanted to do is to come back to council along with any other recommendations that are made today with that language so that we can get that clearly defined. At hearings, as applicants come before council, this is always an item of discussion and there's always a discussion as to what is actual amplified sound. So we feel if it is defined, that further clarifies it and we can add that to the code.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Hi, Chair. Chair, this is Carol.
Yeah.
I just want to respond quickly. I appreciate the councilman's suggestion. We certainly can take all of that into consideration and I want, would be amenable for us to provide some options that we would, we would favor toward, we respect that there are currently some, how would I say, egregious situations that are occurring out there. But there are many, many, many very acceptable scenarios. So I think we want to be careful about swinging the pendulum too far back in the control perspective. And if you'd be amenable, we'd be happy to bring back some options that may include what you suggested, but some alternatives as well to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Goo, Councilman Goo.
I'm hoping I'm asking the right question to get a good answer, but maybe Ms. Doc can help me. Again, I go back to, I haven't been down to Channel Side. I've seen that the, the old club when it was Asia, I don't know if the, that this amplified sound is outdoors or with the, we're talking about the sound is indoors that is so egregious that is rattling the, the building or rattling within. So again, you said we have nothing, no kind of code as, as reference to that. But I think that's starting to happen a lot with a lot of the things that we're granting that are in these residential buildings now. I think we may have to look at that as, as well. Would you agree?
Yes, Councilman, we have, so there are two things. In chapter 27, we have the outdoor amplified sound, which are the conditions along with the special uses. But we also have defined in the code plainly audible sound. And that's where sometimes that could come into play when you're talking about a location and there's noise is excessive and it's inside. That's where that plainly audible definition, that's where it will fall within that.
And Councilman Goo, Councilman Goo, this is, I'm sorry, just to want to respond that the, the location, the establishment that we received so many complaints about during this morning's public comment, it has an exterior location, which is primarily the source of the complaints. The music is, is very loud there. And again, I would reiterate that that situation from our perspective is, is not acceptable in the way that they're, they've been conducting themselves. And, but, but reflect that there are many, many establishments that do maintain outdoor amplified. A way. So we would like, like to try to strike a balance to ensure that we can maintain those that are meeting expectations and account for those that are egregiously not meeting expectations. Thank you.
All right. I was going to make a motion in reference to the sense that we're discussing it and you made light of that situation down in Ms. Post. I'll hold back my motion this afternoon since you guys are going to come out with some suggestions and positive memories to these situations we're talking about.
All right, Chair, Councilman Miranda.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, I'm looking at this at a wider scope and here's what I think. When you have an empty lot and you're the owner and someone either in the neighborhood or from some other parts of town or some other city dumped something in there, who do we hold responsible when they don't catch them? The owner of the property. When you have a house or vacant land, somebody dumped something in your vacant land next to your house, who's responsible? The owner of the property. And I know it's a different theme. When you have rental property and your tenant is doing something that is disturbing the neighborhood, then go after the tenant, then go who after who? The owner of the property. So now we have an alcohol beverage problem that the owner of the property is never cited. Should it be that the owner of the property is cited along with the renter, whoever is running that restaurant or, or nightclub or whatever so that that owner knows what's going on? He or her are also alluded to the fact that they might be in violation and might have a problem with the city? I think that would add a lot more bite to, to solve these problems.
Hello? I have a question. Any response to Councilman Miranda? Miranda, are you still on?
Yeah, I'm, I'm listening. I thought everybody went mute. I thought I went deaf.
I don't know.
Mr. Miranda. And he's done.
All right. Anybody else have any? Yes, go ahead.
So we can certainly take a look into the location. Are you asking about enforcement in general, Councilman Miranda?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, were, were, Councilman Miranda, were you asking about enforcement in general?
Yes, enforcement in general because I look at other areas and I know it's not wet zoning, but we go after the proprietor of the owner of whoever owns the land. And certainly it's, but in this case, these cases, we just tell the nightclub, hey, shut it down. And we tell whoever is running the nightclub or the restaurant, hey, you got to conform with the, with the laws. But do we ever go after and tell the owner who's the one that's responsible for having that tenant in there? Hey, you're violating the law.
Yes, Councilman, we actually send out notification to the property owner, to the business operator and to the, to the alcohol license holder.
And does that, the alcohol license holder does not necessarily is the owner of the building?
Correct.
Does that, does that help the city have a quicker response to solving the problem to your knowledge?
It has in the past when we notify all. And when we mention alcohol beverage license with the state, it gets a reaction quickly.
I understand. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions?
Can I just make a quick statement?
I heard Carlson.
Yes.
Dingfelter.
I just, along lines of what a couple other folks said, I really like the idea that, that Yoli proposed a few years ago where the entitlement would be until midnight. And then after that, it would, it would be under a business license or some other category that could be taken away if somebody was a bad actor. And this is not just sound, it's alcohol in general. But I wish that we could bring that back and look at it in another way because it seems like once these are on the, in the entitlements, then, then we, we have very little ability to change them. And also these, these complaints stretch code enforcement. I don't know if there's a way to, to embed harsher penalties too in case somebody is a bad actor. And I, and I think that, just to say this, it seems like most folks are trying to, to do the right thing. But there are some folks who just completely ignore the rules and we need to figure out what to do about that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one, one last try.
Go ahead, sir.
I think that those entitlements that Ms. Kapine was referring to, I think they come out of St. Pete. I'm not sure though. Where you can have it at midnight and you have to have some entitlements and some give and take.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Dingfelter.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if my mic was working. Do you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Two things. One, Mr. Citro, to the extent, I, I, I think I, I agree with you completely. I think the default position on wet zonings, as, as you and I have noticed on many late evenings, I think the default position, just like the hours should be reduced. But I think the default position on, on noise and especially on outdoor amplified noise should be backed up to no out, no amplified noise. And then if somebody wants to ask for that as a waiver, then they can and they can justify it. So again, you know, the default position should be in the negative and then we can go from there. And, and the Ms. Post comments that, you know, that would not impact people who already have existing licenses because this would only impact future licenses. And in regard to this park and rec thing, I'm going to, I'm going to reinforce Councilman Goo's comments. We had at least 10 letters and probably more than 10 verbal comments come into us today on this park and rec situation, which is at the base of the Tower of Channel Side. I hadn't heard about it prior to this week. Maybe it's been an issue that's been brewing and I wasn't aware of it and I apologize. But this is a bad situation. You know, we have people, you know, there's been reports of urination and defecation and, and obviously bad noise and too much partying and horn blasting late into the evening and it's gotten totally out of control. So I, in a very, very general way, I'm going to ask that, that city staff and people with all of the tools at their, at their side, take on this issue and take on this, this, this business and try and, and at a, at a minimum, enforce or perhaps mediate some, some reasonable activity. And if we can't mediate it, then let's litigate it. But anyway, so as a starter, my motion is to ask legal and staff to take a look at the entire situation, use all the tools that they have, whether or not it's the wet, the current wet zoning license, the noise code, public nuisance codes, whatever, whatever's available. And come back to us at our next meeting, our next regular meeting, which is what? The beginning of November? And with, with a report under staff report.
Is it the end of November, November 5th?
Yes, sir.
We are motioning, Councilman Ding. Under staff report.
Yes, with a verbal report.
Okay, so you want somebody on the, well, it'll be hybrid by then, but yeah, we'll have a live, we'll have a person. All right, we are motioning Councilman Dingfelter for November 5th under staff report. Do we have a second?
Second, Citro.
Second from Councilmember Citro. Any objections?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just to let Mr. Dingfelter know, I appreciate the motion. Of course, I'll go along with that motion. But I had already sent a message to my aide to give it to EPE and Code on the issue as well. Of course, I'm going to approve the motion.
Great. Any objections? Hearing uninitiated consent, the motion passes. Thank you very much. Remember, we have another item after this, then we have new business, then we have a special call and then we have 31 items on the agenda tonight beginning at 5:01.
Chairman, if I may, this is LaShawn Doc. If we could get clarification on the motions, the other motions that were made. There was a motion regarding no out, for staff to come back to council with options regarding no outdoor amplified sound. Is this regarding all uses related to alcohol sales, restaurant and bar lounge?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Ms. Doc, I don't recall a motion of, this is Martin Shelby. I don't recall a motion of council being made with regards specifically to a specific direction. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I believe the motion that was made, I, I believe the conversation, I'm not sure, Mr. Carlson started it by saying that Yoli Kapine, and that refers to the St. Pete ordinance that you all pay up to 12 and after that you want any distance, you have to have a give and take with the, with the members of the, whatever government it is. I believe that's where that comes from.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. And there was hours, correct. There was a motion regarding.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't recall, Mr. Chairman, and I'll, I'll, I'll ask of the clerk. Were there any specific motions made with regard to these? I don't recall.
No, there was no motion made, sir. There was a reference, I believe, by Councilmember Carlson regarding the Yoli Kapine and that goes back to St. Pete at 12 o'clock. And after that, the 3 o'clock, you have to give and take with that government, whatever government it may be.
Understood. And I also recall a discussion between Councilman Citro and Councilman Carlson with regard to, I, I don't recall if it was Councilman Carlson, I believe it was, with regard to the default being no outdoor amplified sound. And then there was also the discussion, I requested the administration to come back with a definition and I guess they planned on doing that anyway, but that also was discussed. But there was no motions on the floor and I just wanted to know whether staff wants specific motions or taking general consensus and coming back on, on another day, for instance, like what you did with the prior items.
Yes, it, I mean, we are available to do either. It's council's desire. We can certainly come back and have further discussion at a later date. What date would you like for us to report?
Any suggestions? The motion that was made was for November 5th. Any suggestions for another date or another time?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, my November 5th motion was specifically related to that, to that park and rec, you know, bar, restaurant. They, as regarding to the other issues, I think we probably can come back on the 19th with, with the other issues that Mr. Goers and Ms. Post brought up.
I agree. Is there a motion there, Mr. Chairman?
Would anybody like to make the motion for that, November 19?
If there's a motion by Mr. Dingfelter, I'll second it. That's a motion by Mr. Ding Felder. I'll second it.
It's fine with me.
Are you making a motion for November nineteen?
Correct, on the, on the, the issues that we've addressed, uh, in regard to hours of operation and distance separation and noise.
All right, we have a motion, Councilman Ding Felder, with a second from Councilmember Miranda. Is there any objection, any objection to the motion? Hearing no objection by unanimous consent, the motion passes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council.
All right, anything else, ma'am?
That's it for this report. Thank you.
Okay. We go on to the last item, item number thirteen. Item number thirteen.
Good afternoon, Council. This is Kaon Henderson from Housing and Community Development Division. I'm going to go over the eviction prevention program and some of the work that we've been doing since the pandemic started. Next slide, please. Recently, Centers for Disease Control has issued a temporary halt to residential eviction for non-payment that will go through the end of this year. So basically, that will, um, protect tenants from any landlord, owner, or property manager from evicting the covered person for non-payment of rent. And this has been a nationwide eviction moratorium. While the Florida governor has recently lifted the moratorium lift, um, effect in our city, the CDC moratorium will supersede the governor's lift, so it will give some additional protection until the end of this year. Next slide, please. Unlike some of the other moratoriums that were issued, the lift is not going to be automatically granted to tenants. They do have to notify their landlord by submitting a declaration form. So the tenant, leasing resident, anyone who's, um, in that property, they do have to provide a completed and signed copy of the declaration to the owner where they live or whoever has the right to evict them or remove them from where they are. And that declaration has to be signed and transmitted either electronically or by hard copy. So it's not automatically assumed that they have been granted it, even though it's been, um, issued. Next slide, please. So for the next two slides, we're just gonna go over who's eligible to complete the declaration form. It is on the form itself, but because the form will seem quite small and illegible, we've just put the, um, bullet points here. The individual has, um, has to have used the best efforts to obtain all available government assistance for rent or housing during this pandemic. They expect to earn no more than ninety-nine thousand as an annual income for the calendar year of twenty twenty, or if they're filing jointly, no more than a hundred and ninety-eight thousand. They were not required to report any income in two thousand and nineteen, and that could have been because they were on fixed income, income or a lack of income. They received an economic impact payment for the stimulus check that was issued. Next slide, please. And then the other, um, bullet points here will show the other reasons. The individual is unable to pay the full rent or make a full housing payment due to a substantial loss of their income. Um, the individual used best efforts to make sure that they made timely partial payments that are as close to full payments as they could based on their individual circumstances. And if it weren't for this lift, then the eviction would likely render them to become homeless for either the individual or the family. Next slide, please. So this is the actual form. We've also put the website where this form can be, um, located. It is quite small, but it does go through some of the bullets that we just, um, went over, and then the signature page that, uh, the tenant has to sign so that they could submit to the landlord to be approved. Next slide, please. So the next two slides are gonna be quite hard to read, um, just because it's really, the information is quite small, but we're gonna go over both the evictions and the writ process. So any eviction that happened after March eighteenth is attributed to the COVID. And as you can see, uh, probably right around March twenty-third, when the eviction moratorium was, um, put in place, the eviction numbers were quite low. Since the eviction moratorium has been lifted by the governor, the eviction numbers has gone up. In fact, the recent numbers, um, as of ten seventeen, shows two hundred and forty-three that were, um, in place. And that's not on the slide, but that's the most recent that we've gotten. The eviction process does start with a three-day notice to pay or vacate, and then the landlord can, um, then file eviction forms with the court, and that can either be upheld or denied. And we try to get the tenants to understand that there is a difference between the eviction and the three-day notice, which we'll go through at the end of this, um, presentation also. Next slide, please. So this shows the Hillsborough County writs also. So the writ of possession now has happened because the tenant has been court ordered to vacate. Those numbers are also on the incline. Um, the recent numbers that we have from October sixteenth, there were eighty-one writ of possessions that were also done. So the numbers are slightly going up now that the, um, moratorium lift was, um, issued by the governor. Next slide, please. So just a brief, um, update on some of the CARES fund-in. The jurisdiction with populations that were greater than five hundred thousand did receive direct CARES fund-in. So Hillsborough County received the, um, CARES fund-in, and they received about two hundred and fifty-six million dollars. And this also aided residents of City of Tampa, Plant City, Temple Terrace, and unincorporated Hillsborough. So some of the relief efforts that they did, did include City of Tampa residents. Next slide, please. So some of the financial relief that we've done to prevent the eviction process is we have done some financial relief, both through the City of Tampa's One Tampa Relief Effort Programs, as well as the county's R three program and their social service plan. As far as technical support, we, um, refer tenants to emergency solutions, um, shelters. Some of those are Catholic charities, Metropolitan Ministries, as well as working with Tampa Hillsborough Homeless Initiative, also known as THHI, and working with landlords to create a rental rehab program. And we certainly want to make sure that we're always advocating for the, um, persons who are facing eviction by pairing them with housing counseling agencies who help them to know their rights, as well as sets and university law, um, law school tutorial videos, so that they know what their tenant rights are. Next slide, please. Thank you. So with the City of Tampa, um, One Tampa Relief Program, these numbers that I'm going over here are just specifically for the individuals. So we have helped one thousand two hundred and fifty-five individuals to remain stably housed in their homes during this pandemic. So far, we've distributed one point seven million with an additional one point three, um, that's projected to be paid out. And that brings us to an approximate three million dollars that we've paid out so far for, um, one thousand two hundred and fifty-five, um, families with rent, mortgage, and utility payments. We did start the program thirty days after the lockdown on April seventeenth. So we started rather quickly so that we can try to avoid some of the eviction process or the fear in some of the families for eviction. And this served as an immediate bridge while we still were waiting for additional federal state funds to be approved. Next slide, please. So while the eviction moratorium is in place, um, some landlords had, um, were unable to put, uh, make repair to their units because they had reduced rental income. So this is really, um, we found that this became really evident in affordable housing. So for those who were unable to make their payment, the landlord was unable to uphold the, um, property by making the necessary repairs that were needed. And so as the units are not prepared, repaired, I'm sorry, they are at risk of being uninhabitable and then reducing the supply of affordable rental units that we have, and we're already facing a crisis of that. Next slide, please. So the next phase of the CARES funds, um, we want to target, continue to target the prevention eviction, and we want to focus on multifamily rental properties, which creates a larger scale for us to try to prevent the eviction. So we are, have created a program where we will target those, uh, multifamily properties. They have to provide housing for very low and low-income families, and we're gonna focus on those that are most in need properties that, um, need to either take people off the wait-in list to continue to remain these, uh, affordable units. They must have experienced at least twenty-five percent loss of rental income between February and September. And with this program, it will provide a loan to rehab the building and properties to benefit the tenants of up to ten thousand per unit. And we'll impose some rent restrictions for long-term affordability, so we will impose within the agreements that they keep, um, so many units affordable. Next slide, please. So our goal is to save off evictions due to uninhabitable units. We want to allow for monitoring of affordable units to continue to provide the housing conditions and develop a positive relationship with affordable apartment owners to help house homeless and others that are seeking affordable rentals. Next slide, please. So Hillsborough County had their R three program, their Rapid Response Recovery Program. Since this slide, they have closed their application process and are no longer taking applications. So this, they are no, no longer able to apply at the website that's listed. Next slide, please. So I want to go through some of the technical support that we want to offer. We are collaborating with the county and THHI, as well as the Florida Bar Association. We have done one virtual speed leasing so far. Um, that one was more of a pilot program that we did back in August. And we are earmarking to do an additional six virtual events and want to target at least two hundred and seventy people. Continue with housing rental assistance and housing counseling. So the housing counseling agencies that we partner with, they do offer some rental assistance, as well as, uh, financial assistance for those who are looking to rent. Offering Florida Housing Search dot org as a way to find affordable units. Faze is, um, Florida Attorney, Attorneys Consulting Against Eviction. We're also looking for legal assistance to register and volunteer. We've also put this up on our website so that they can come and help to consult those who are facing eviction, as well as have virtual job fairs. Right now, some of the referrals that we're making for the shelter programs that are in the city are Catholic Charities, Daco, Metropolitan Ministries, and Salvation Army. And they are requiring an eviction notice or a three-day notice. They can also do help with some rental assistance and rental arrears that, as they have funded from other sources, um, also. And then they will also help with the rental application, security and utility deposit, and any move-in costs for some of those who are looking to move because they've already become homeless. And they all have a housing specialist who also helps them to find, um, affordable units throughout the city. Next slide, please. So I spoke a little bit earlier about the housing counseling agencies that we partnered with. So these are for the housing counseling agencies that we currently partner with. And they all do some form of rental counseling. So they do, we do, uh, constantly send clients their way so that they can help with both the rental counseling, again, and the financial aspect of helping them to find new units. Next slide. So during the workshop, as far as letting people know what their rights are, some of the things that we ju, we generally like them to realize is that a three-day notice is not the same thing as an eviction. Oftentimes, they get the three-day notice and think that that means it's the same thing as an eviction. Evictions are to be court ordered. Um, we also like them to know some of their rights. The rent increase cannot just happen because the landlord felt like it, but it has to be saved in their lease. Um, they can't pay fees or should not pay fees that are not listed on their lease or any addendums that they receive, and they are protected under fair housing laws, as well as entitled to a written lease agreement and not just verbal agreements. And tenants do have the rights for repairs to be made, which is why we also want to, um, continue with that rental rehab program. And they are also entitled to their security deposit if no damages have been made. Next slide, please. This slide just talks about what can be done if a tenant felt like some of their fair housing, um, laws have been violated, then they can file a fair housing complaint. If they're within the City of Tampa, it is within our office that they file that complaint. We've listed that information. And if they're outside of the City of Tampa limits, then they would file it directly with HUD. And that is the end of this presentation. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions from council members? Well, I appreciate the, uh, the presentation, and, and I'll, and I'll just put this out there. You know, it's been a very difficult year for a lot of people. The city has helped so many other organizations. I've helped people pay their rent, businesses that were struggling, are struggling, people that were shut down, whatever. But I have to say shame on some landlords, um, because there were some that, uh, they were happy to collect rent, and they were good to their tenants, and there were others that, uh, raised people's rents over the summer and before, even if it was a minimal amount. But you'd think, shouldn't landlords be happy that they're collecting rent, um, you, one would assume in this situation. But others went ahead and, um, and raised people's rents, which I, I just found it unnecessary, you know, and really for no reason other than the lease agreement said, or whatever it is, you know, that, that tenant had signed in the past. So I wanted to put that out there. Any questions from council members on this? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate it. That concludes the agenda, I believe. Um, and we can go to information reports and new business by council members. Councilmember Viera, um, i- is not here today, so I go to Councilmember Goo.
Uh, nothing, sir.
Nothing. Councilmember Ding Felder.
I'm gonna hold my business, new business till later, but are we doing that special call meeting or no?
Yeah, we're gonna go right into it right after we finish this.
If I can, Mr. Chairman, Martin Shelby, I don't believe there's new business under the special call.
I have it here in the information reports and new business, and then motion to receive and file. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Let me just double check. You know, I, I don't believe there is.
For the, for the workshop. I'm sorry, I, I apologize. You mean special call. If not, there's also new business under tonight's, uh, meeting anyway, so. Um, did anything, Councilman Ding Felder, you said?
I'm good. I'll do this.
All right, Councilman Carlson.
No, sir, thank you.
Councilman Citro.
I would like to do one right now, and then I will hold off my others until later. I move.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I move to place on the November fifth, twenty twenty, agenda, a resolution supporting sustainability and resiliency goals for the City of Tampa under, and place this under new business. I will also mention that this has been distributed to all council members and filed with the clerk.
We have motion from Councilman Citro. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, Martin Shelby, could that be placed under the, uh, staff, unfinished business and staff reports, as opposed to the new business section?
I apologize, under, um, unfinished business or staff reports.
Thank you.
Very good. We have a motion from Councilman Citro, a second from Councilman Miranda. Any objection to the motion? Hearing number unanimous consent, the motion passes. Thank you very much. And Councilman Citro, you said you have more new business, but for later tonight?
I'll do it tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. Councilman Miranda, do you have anything, sir?
One thing, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Viera asked me to change his apprenticeship ordinance that was coming up in the next, uh, council meeting to December the third, twenty twenty, so it gives the, the legal department more time to, to make the, the request that he suggested. I want to move that to December third.
All right. Yes, sir. Councilman Miranda with the motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Citro.
Second from Councilman Citro, any objection to the motion? Hearing number unanimous consent, the motion passes. I have nothing. May I have a motion to receive and file or document?
Mr. Chairman, receive and file.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda. Do we have a second to receive and file?
Second, Citro.
Second from Councilman Citro, any objection? All right, hearing number unanimous consent. This workshop meeting is adjourned. I am going to pause for a moment. Does the clerk need, uh, time to switch things over before we go into the special call?
I believe our CTTV team will need a mo, at least five minutes.
Okay, we're gonna, uh, just take a, a break. Do not log out of your, uh, phone systems or computer systems. Uh, and we will begin the special call at, it's three thirty-three, just to give it a little more leeway. We'll begin the special call at three forty PM. Uh, again, mute your microphones, and, uh, we'll go into special call from there. Thank you.